... board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, September 17. Please be reminded that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted later on the Board's YouTube channel. Trustee Carrato, please, will you please lead us in the opening prayer and the National Anthem and the oath of citizenship?
Of course, Mr. Chair. The sign of our faith, in the name of Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me so love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is discord, union. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as it is to understand, to be loved as it is to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
I affirm that I will be faithful bear truly to the Queen Elizabeth II, Queen of Canada, her heirs and successors, and that I will faithfully observe the laws of Canada and fulfill my duties as Canadian citizen. Thank you. There were no motions adopted in camera to be read in the public session. We did not get to information received in camera. We'll have to go back in camera later in the meeting. Approval of agenda, may have a motion to approve the agenda. It's moved by trustee O'Brien, seconded by trustee Guzzo. All in favor?
No, sorry.
Oh, you have questions?
Yeah, yes. I'd like to put a notice of motion on the table.
Okay.
So I'll read the notice of motion. The title, which is busing. Busing routes.
Okay.
I will send the notice, the actual full motion.
You'll read it.
I'll read it in permission.
Okay.
Notice of motion on busing.
Perfect. Thank you. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Approved by trustee Guzzo and seconded by trustee Duarte. All in favor? Motion passes. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest? No, okay. Presentations, we have a presentation of the Board's Pathway Team, welcome. When you're ready, please begin.
Mr. Chair, with your indulgence, I'll introduce the, our guests. We have this evening two members of our Board Pathways Team, Experiential Learning Coordinator, John Dietrich, and OYAP and Specialist High Schools Major Consultant, Mark Ives, and they're here this evening to share with you some of the opportunities that are available to our
Those programs, thank you, impact our students. The research tells us, the earlier they decide, the more likely they are to go on to post-secondary education. With that in mind, students in our Board in grade seven began working with our Pathways itinerants to create an online IPP or Individual Pathways Plan. The IPP continues to be developed throughout the remainder of a student's elementary and secondary school journey. The IPP is essentially a portfolio that documents a student's school-based and life experiences. Students use the questions outlined in the ministry's four-step inquiry model to guide the process of portfolio building and reflection. That's an example of the inquiry model. Who am I? What are my opportunities? Who do I want to become? And what is my plan for achieving my goals? And we like to draw your attention to the quote at the bottom, "Making students the architects of their own future." We love that quote because the reality is, we are facilitators. Our role is to provide them with opportunities, guidance, support, but we want them to make their own choices. Before I pass it over to Mark, we've got a little student sample, a student voice from some of our members of our Experiential Learning Camp and their experiences with Experiential Learning and My Blueprint.
As students begin to discover who they are and who they want to become, as they enter secondary school, they will start to investigate the four pathways: apprenticeship, college, university, and workplace. Pathways in the HCDSB involve students, their parents, educators, and sector partners. Together, they use relevant information about themselves and the world around them to make informed decisions in a faith-centered environment that leads them to their destination. The best way for you to truly understand the pathway opportunities is to start by hearing from some of our former students. You may recognize Nathan. He's a Bishop Reading graduate who's currently studying biomedical engineering at the University of Waterloo. Here is Nathan's story.
Hi, my name is Nathan Torquay. I graduated from a bigger by 2018, and now I'm studying medical engineering at the University of Waterloo. If I think back five years ago, I would be thinking I would tell myself just to really dig deep into what I like and let that guide you in school. So here's, here's some examples of that. So you can ask yourself, do you find that you really like debating or arguing? So what does that mean then? Maybe that means you're pursuing things like moral generations or stuff. And then maybe first that means you like, you know, pursue, pursue being a lawyer or something like that. Another example is you really like hands-on work. So maybe you'll be going to trade, do anything. So what you figure out what you like and let that guide you, show your activities and where you see yourself wanting. I think that, that is something that would really help me and something I'm still working on and I figure right now.
We use a wide variety of pathway programs and strategies in our Board, such as co-op education, Specialist High Skills Major, also known as CHISM, Ontario Youth Apprenticeship Program, OYAP, dual credits, and many more, as you can see. The Ontario Youth Apprenticeship Program, or OYAP, is a school-to-work program that opens the door for students to explore and work in apprenticeship occupations, starting in grade 11 or 12, through the co-op education program. Students have an opportunity to become registered apprentices and work towards becoming a certified journey person in a skilled trade while completing their OSSD. The apprenticeship pathway is a perfect opportunity for students to earn while they learn. As you can see, there are over 140 regulated trades in Ontario for students to consider as a future career. I realize this list may be a little tough to read since there's so much on there, but the purpose of us showing you this graphic is you can see how many there actually are. All trades are divided into four sectors: construction, industrial, motive power, and service sector. There's an extensive list available on the ministry website as well. Who better than an Ontario Youth Apprenticeship graduate to help learn more about the OYAP programs that we have? This is Jeff. He was a Notre Dame grad who decided to pursue the construction OYAP program, and here is his story.
Hello, I graduated from Notre Dame High School in 2008. After I graduated, I went on to the Ontario Youth Apprenticeship Program, I did construction renovation. And from there, I ended up doing a co-op for about a year, renovating the house in Burlington. And then decided I wanted to pursue the career of cabinet, so I went to apply, I got the diploma college for cabinet program. Now, the senior program, I learned a lot, graduated from that, and from there, I ended up getting a job working for a construction company, which then turned into me serving my own construction company, which is actually still a woodgrap. So I've been doing that whole prior year for about a year now. And then this job, it's booming, and I owe a lot of that to the high school program I had with Mr. Curran, also what I owe to his program. So I'm really grateful for everything he taught me. Going to high school, I was nervous getting graded, didn't know much of what I wanted to do. Took a couple years, probably before my grade 11, I figured out that cabinet is the thing I wanted to do. If you're one of those kids going to grade nine or you're in high school right now, you just don't know what you're going to do, just keep patient, figure out things you like, and you know, put your head down, think, think over how to put the policy together.
Co-op is offered at all of our secondary schools and available to any student who is interested in earning credits through experiential learning in a workplace setting. It is an excellent opportunity for students in grade 11 or 12 to further explore their potential career path through job shadowing. In fact, co-op is a requirement for both the OYAP and the CHISM programs. Another student who we'd like to, you to hear from is an assumption graduate named Max. Max had a slightly different pathway to his career, and here is his story.
Hey everyone, my name is Max, and I graduated from Suncion High School three years ago. I'm 20 years old, and this is my story. Coming out of high school, I decided I was going to go to university. Right out of university, entering high school, I, I went to Western for one year for health sciences. I didn't put too much thought in it because everyone was kind of doing it, so that's what I, so I ran with it for one year. And it was a great experience, I loved it, met so many cool, unique people. But after the year was up, I decided, after the long and hard thought, to, to switch over to college. So I did a year of college, finished our college for renewable energy. So now I'm certified technician on renewable energy services, so solar panels, winter blinds, all new upcoming energies, titles as well. So I'm going to go with that. And I just graduated this summer, and then I headed out west, so I'm currently working at one of those skidos out west as a, as a ski technician. It's kind of like a hobby of mine, a little bit of a dream that I've had for a while. So I headed out here, and that's what I'm doing now. And I just thought if I was to tell myself something, it'd be to put a little bit more thought into my actions. I don't regret anything that I've done, but it's important to know that it's okay to change your mind or make decisions that are best for you and not let anyone around you, you know, think or, or issue. Thank you.
An example of some of the programs that helps students make the best decision for them are the Specialist High Skills Major Program, CHISM. CHISM students focus on a career path that matches their skills and interests while working towards their OSSD. Students receive the CHISM seal on their diploma when they complete a specific bundle of courses in the student's selected field, earn valuable industry certifications including first aid and CPR, and gain important skills on the job through co-op placements and experiential learning opportunities. The best way to learn about the CHISM programs is from our students. One of the most popular CHISM programs offered in our Board is run by Lori Field, a teacher at St. Thomas Aquinas. Here are some of the student testimonials featured from last year.
Well, I always had an interest in sciences, but I wasn't sure exactly what I wanted to do. Then I saw that healthcare was an option for me to kind of figure out what I wanted for a career path. So I did healthcare first year, and I didn't even know about CHISM to begin with, but once I like brought me to the course, then she kind of like brought to that idea of joining CHISM.
Just the thing for learning was kind of interesting, and there were keys to be applied. I think that's a really big thing for a lot of kids who, you know, struggle with sciences and things like that. But you can use this class, and it does really help. But allowing me to realize what I could do, the biggest thing was probably like the actual practical skill. So we do learn how to take blood, we learn how to do pictures, we learn how to take temperature, like temperatures, kind of things like that. But above everything else, I think communication is probably the biggest thing. I just liked how hands-on it is. It's a lot of knowledge, and there are a lot of things to learn, and there's a lot of terminology, it's technical things, but it's not completely abstract. It's, we have case studies where it looks real life situations and helps us to know how to apply the knowledge that we gain. And also little things like seeing where we can draw blood. We have the fentanyl, like blood veins are to do it, and it's just really cool to be able to try out these skills that we're learning.
I learned a lot of great skills, and I'm a more experienced professional, especially to get stuck to for what we're seeing in the future. So I'm prepared and participating in general prepare for what we're seeing in the future compared to other students, but I don't have fresh room.
Awesome, amazing. It was a lot of hours, again, I did mine in the summertime, so we just really had sex. But it was really, it was really good because I made a lot of good connections.
So the CHISM program, which is a very good idea, is a really challenging, which is for students who are in their education, and gives me a lot of experience, and it's going to carry that into my primary education and my journey.
These are all the ministry CHISM sectors available in Ontario. We offer a variety of these programs across the secondary schools in our Board, such as arts and culture, health and wellness, information and communication technology, and this list is also available on the ministry website. Another option for our students is dual credits. Dual credit programs allow students, while they're still in secondary school, to take college or apprenticeship courses that count towards both their OSSD and their post-secondary certificate, diploma, degree, or apprenticeship. The goal of the dual credit program is to help out students make a successful transition to college or an apprenticeship program and to gain a greater insight into education and career planning decisions. And as you can see there, we have our partnering colleges in the area, Sheridan, Humbert, Mohawk, and Seneca. And as you can see, there are a number of courses available to our students for dual credit, such as media, chef, electrical, child and youth worker, and many more. The point that we're making here today is that there are no best program pathways, college, workplace, university, or apprenticeship, but there is one that is best for each student. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak tonight. As you can see, this is something that we're very passionate about. I know we threw a great deal of information at you, but to help, we have compiled a package for you to take away. This package, it's the green folder in front of you, which includes much more detail about a few of the programs that we have, mentioned in this presentation. Feel free to make note of our email addresses up there. We're more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, gentlemen. That was a very thorough and comprehensive presentation. We imparted, you imparted a lot of information that we should, we know, but it was enlightening to know to that depth. Do the trustees have any questions or comments? No? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. A few minutes for our delegates to, to set up. I now invite Ms. Satimi up to present her delegation on Policy IIi-51, Optional French Programming. Please be reminded that you have 10 minutes to make your presentation. We ask you to stay on script. I will ask Director Daly to help track the time. At the end of the delegation, there will be an opportunity for trustees to ask questions for clarification purposes. Would you like us to notify you when you have one minute left?
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you. Please begin.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, trustees, for this opportunity to address and provide my views on Policy II-51, Optional French Programming, Early French Immersion and Extended French. Before I begin, I understand that there was some discussions at the last policy meeting that might already be addressing some of the concerns that I'm going to raise within the interest of time. I'm just going to stay on script and barrel through my presentation. I do have a lot to say, and I'm mindful of the time, so I apologize for the rate I'm going to be speaking at. My name is Christina Satimian. I'm the mother of two children enrolled at St. Mary's. My son is in grade three French immersion, and his younger sister is in senior kindergarten. At the outset, I'd like to state that our experience with the French immersion program in St. Mary's in general has been extremely positive. The teachers, quality of education, and the level of French instruction that he has received so far have been absolutely superb. And as a result, we're eager and hopeful for his younger sister to join him in the French immersion program next year. My family is so grateful that the trustees voted to make French immersion a permanent program at the Halton Catholic District School Board, and appreciate all of the work that the trustees and the Board staff are doing to develop and support French programming at the Halton Catholic District School Board. And in furthering that goal, the importance of Policy II-51 cannot be understated. This is a critical opportunity for you, the trustees, to not only bring transparency to the administrative process and promote goodwill among stakeholders, but also to chart a course of action for the Board and define the limits within which it can exercise judgment. With that said, while I think that Policy II-51 is both a necessary and a welcome addition, I do believe it falls significantly short of achieving what it ought to achieve, and it does nothing to address the serious deficiencies with the current delivery and administration of the optional French programs by Halton Catholic District School Board, and specifically the early French immersion program. In my view, these are the lack of access to French language programming and relatedly the need to align programming for French language families. As you have been aware by previous delegations and by the data that has been presented by the Board staff, there is a high and growing demand for French immersion programming at the Halton Catholic District School Board, and this trend is expected to continue for the foreseeable future. Board staff has presented enrollment data for the 2019-2020 school year, showing that as of June 2019, there were 108 students left on the French immersion waitlist, and compare this to the mere 22 students on the waitlist for Extended French. I do believe my original delegation had a misprint there, and I had put 15, but it is 22 on the Extended French waitlist. That's 108 students in your Board who have a desire and a right to access French immersion programming but are being denied. But notwithstanding this fact, Policy II-51 does not reflect a positive commitment by the Halton Catholic District School Board to expand the program to ensure equitable and inclusive access to French immersion by our students. The French immersion program has been offered by HCDSB since 2013 and has been a permanent program now for two years. While I appreciate and recognize that the Board has taken certain measures to align optional French programs, it perplexes me that despite the clear demand and high waitlists in three of the four regional sites, there have been no efforts made to expand the EFI program beyond two 23-student classes at each regional site. Staffing challenges are routinely cited by the Board as a limiting factor, but neighboring Boards, both Catholic and public, have managed to expand their French immersion programs, some with even earlier entry points than grade one, and have been offering French immersion programming for decades despite facing the same struggles regarding staffing and accommodation. Why is this? Hamilton Wentworth Catholic School Board added two new EFI sites for 2019. Waterloo Catholic District School Board, whose EFI program is even younger than ours, has established a formal expansion plan for their program, adding two new sites for 2019, two for 2020, and has identified a fifth expansion site. Toronto Catholic District School Board added five new French immersion sites in 2017 and another five in 2018, and has extended its recruiting to Quebec. Other Catholic Boards are making this work. Why can't we? Why doesn't the Board have a strategy in place for expanding the programming and for recruiting and retaining French teachers? We are already years behind our neighboring Boards, and this gap is only widening. In Halton, our public counterpart, the Halton District School Board has unlimited enrollment in its EFI program. That's a huge inequity in programming for Halton students. Our students are being placed at a disadvantage relative to their public counterparts. I would also like to point out that despite the so-called staffing crisis, and despite the increasing demand for French immersion versus Extended French, and despite the reams of evidence that were presented by delegates in 2016 and 2017 on the benefits of early French immersion versus Extended French, the Board has inexplicably created yet another Extended French site for 2019 at Our Lady of Peace. As of June 2019, there were only 15 students enrolled in the program. That's half a class. This is a complete waste of resources that could have and should have been used to support an expansion of the EFI program at a new site. If there is truly a staffing crisis, then it is incumbent on the Board to be strategic about maximizing French teacher resources. You can't be wasting these resources by running programs at half-capacity. I would like to remind the trustees that on November 21, 2017, you passed Resolution Number 2417, which requires that the Board make EFI and French immersion to grade 12 strategic priorities, including setting a plan of action for the programs at their current or their greater capacity. Policy II-51 as drafted will not help to achieve this objective. The language included in the policy, where possible, where feasible, will be considered, gives the Board de facto unfettered discretion to make significant high-impact changes to the delivery of French language programming, and leaves you, the trustees, with little oversight or authorities to define the limits of that discretion. As drafted, Policy II-51 simply maintains the status quo and enables the Board to continue to fall back on the staffing crisis narrative. Rather than addressing accessibility measures, the focus of Policy II-51 appears to be primarily on the director's discretion to relocate programming. I want to make it clear that program relocation is only one strategy for dealing with accommodation and enrollment pressures, but it is far from the only one. Moreover, relocation will do absolutely nothing to address the current unmet demand for French immersion. I am particularly troubled by how little oversight Policy II-51 gives the trustees with respect to the delivery of optional French programming at Halton Catholic District School Board. I appreciate that the role of the Board of Trustees is governance, but in my view, ensuring delivery and access to quality and in-demand educational programming is not an operational decision. The express roles of the trustees are to deliver effective and appropriate education programs to its pupils, and to develop, monitor, and evaluate the effectiveness of policies to promote the Board's goals. Your role is to represent your constituents and to ensure that our voices are heard. Policy II-51 gives the trustees no say or opportunity to vote on significant changes regarding optional French programming, including program phase-out. How can you fulfill your mandate if there are no mechanisms in place to hold the Board accountable to your accountable to your own resolutions and the board's strategic plan? Trustees, other boards are maintaining these programs and are expanding them to additional schools. In 2018, the federal government announced the 2018-2023 Action Plan for Official Languages with a commitment to provide $500 million in new funding to support French language learning. That is nearly four times the amount of funding allocated by the federal government in 2017 when French immersion was made a permanent program. The Ministry of Education is taking action on the supply, recruitment and retention of French language teachers. Halton Catholic District School Board is projected to receive a language grant of $8,841,022 for 2019-2020 to support delivery of optional French language programming. This is a 4.43% increase over the 2018-2019 revised estimates. And despite provincial budget cuts, Halton Catholic District School Board is projected to receive nearly $5 million more in total funding for 2019-2020 than in 2018-2019. Moreover, provincial budget cuts have not impacted the additional funds received per student enrolled in an optional French program, which is $383 per student enrolled in French immersion starting at grade one and $343,46 per student enrolled in extended French starting in grade five. This is the perfect time to review, renew and strengthen the board's commitment to French immersion programming and to take affirmative action to provide French language learning opportunities that Halton Catholic District School Board families want and deserve. The second major shortcoming of policy II/51, in my view, is that it contains no mechanisms to accommodate or align programming for families. Because Hal-- one minute already, oh my God. Okay. So because there's a cap on French immersion enrollment and because program allocations are determined by random lottery, it's critical that any policy include mechanisms to support and accommodate French language families. In particular, I urge the board to adopt a sibling rule, which gives admission priority to younger siblings of children enrolled in optional French programming. The board argues that providing an advantage to families is not equitable. I strongly disagree with this proposition and I would argue the opposite. It is far less equitable to deny children within the same family unit unequal educational opportunities. I'm running out of time and I do have the rest of my delegation and I would urge you to please read it. I did include a table in there. I had done a survey of neighboring boards with capped enrollment like Halton Catholic District School Board and to see which ones of those boards did have a sibling policy in place. And I found it quite interesting that out of the boards that I surveyed, neighboring boards with an enrollment cap, Halton Catholic District School Board was the only board that didn't have any mechanisms whatsoever to align programming for families or accommodate families. I'm available for questions and to speak afterwards as well. This is matters that are extremely important to my family.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Trustees, are there any clarification questions you would like to ask? Trustee Duarte?
Thank you for presenting. You touched on the last topic of siblings, you know, and can you just elaborate a little more? I'm trying to wrap my head around this and understand why siblings should get accommodated. I don't understand that very clearly.
Well, you know what? I will take the opportunity to read a little bit from my presentation if that's okay because I have that answer there. And for me, siblings who are denied access to the same educational opportunities are placed at a disadvantage relative to one another and I think that has the potential to promote division and disruption within the family unit, leading to resentment and jealousy. And I think this does put children at greater risk of stresses from ruptured relationships and the upheaval of family life. I mean, when we're talking about equity, what is equity? What is equitable? Equity is a relative concept. Is it equitable that one sibling should get an educational opportunity that another sibling is denied? Is it equitable that French language families are forced to juggle, you know, children in different schools and different language streams? It makes it harder to become immersed in one school community, particularly if there's no flexible boundary policy where siblings are sort of automatically, at least accepted into the English stream, like as a bare minimum measure. I think all of these things, you know, the question is, is it equitable? How is it equitable? How is educational disparity amongst family members equitable?
Is there a follow-up question?
Please proceed.
I understand about siblings, Catholic kids and all of them in French program, but can you tell me if the first child has been admitted to French and the second child has no inclination to French? How would that-- you're just preventing another child from getting into the program. So how would that be equitable?
Well, I mean presumably if a parent is enrolling their second child in French, there's an inclination there. I mean, the family is already committed to French language learning and presumably the child wants to. I mean, I can't speak about every family. I know for me, if my daughter said to me, "Mom, I mean, I really do not want to do French," I wouldn't force her to do that. But, you know, in terms of there being, if there's no inclination to French, parents have to make that decision.
Trustee Agnew?
So I just think, I just want to clarify, I think, your question. Trustee Duarte, I'm just, you had made a reference to access to the English stream as well. So I think the question is possibly around if you have a child that's attending a French program at a school, the sibling, because you also mentioned about keeping the kids in the same school. So if the child is not interested in that French piece, would you still be looking for that child to have access to that same school and have access to the English stream?
Yes, yes. I mean, the whole point is you want to, there has to be an interest by the board in keeping families together. I mean, there's got to be an interest in doing that. There's, you know, there's a lot of studies on the benefits of siblings having a shared experience and that, you know, studies showing that, you know, siblings who, they can be positive influences on their younger siblings in terms of being a role model or helping them at school or showing them the ropes, so to speak, at the school. And I think that for families, it becomes very difficult to become fully immersed in a school community if your children are attending different schools because, you know, you're going to different school meetings, different curriculum nights, you know, different volunteer opportunities and you're just stretching yourself thinner and thinner. And I think that most, you know, families, especially with, you know, two working parents, are going to have a hard time, much more difficult time juggling that than if the kids are together in the same school. I think at the very least, there has to be, I think a full sibling policy is warranted, but, you know, I think a minimum would be a flexible boundary policy.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, through Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. So I was trying to understand what you meant by grandfathering. It's one of your bullets at the end, what you would like. Can you explain that?
I think it, for me, it comes back to the fact that there's so few spaces. So if there's, you know, if a full sibling policy isn't supported, like I think that some thought should be given to some interim measures until the program can be expanded to meet the demand, you know, until there's enough capacity in the program. And when I was saying grandfathering, it's for siblings that are for, you know, children that are currently enrolled in French immersion, for those siblings to be granted a place within the program until such time as permanent measures can be put into place that would address the capacity issues.
Trustee Carabella, you have a follow-up question?
Yes, just, I wanted to talk about the lottery program, the lottery system. How do you find it?
I'm not a fan personally of the lottery system for determining program allocations. I know that it's probably administratively easier, but for me, I think that it's not inherently more fair than a first-come, first-served. And I think that first-come, first-served does a better job at allocating program spaces to families who are actually committed and truly want the spaces. I think that a lottery system, the way it's set up now, is sort of a two-week period where people can apply willy-nilly. I think it does attract speculative applicants who are just sort of taking a wait-and-see approach, you know, seeing if they get a spot and then, you know, either taking it or not taking it, should it be offered. But I don't see it as being inherently more fair or more equitable than a first-come, first-served. I think with first-come, first-served, at least as parents, we feel like we have some control or some say in the process rather than our children's fate being determined by a computer.
Thank you.
Trustees Ernata?
Ms. Satimi, I just have a question. You touched on something when we went back to look at the extended French program. You mentioned something about the 15 spots that are class one at Our Lady of Peace. And my understanding is that you're saying to remove that class and move them into the French immersion stream. I have a problem with that if we're talking about equitable. So both my kids went to extended French. So if we had 15 kids in a class and they said, "Sorry, we can't run the class because we're going to add more to a French immersion class," I don't really think that's equitable, in my opinion. And my second ques-- I'll let you answer that first and then I have another question through Superintendent Protasen.
So, you know what? I'm just going to go back and take a look at what those numbers were. So I think for me, it's not, it wasn't necessary that I'm advocating for that program to now be scrapped. I mean, it's in place. I don't think that that was an appropriate use of resources or an efficient use of resources because there's other extended French programs, but now I'm looking at what the capacity might be. I don't, I don't have the answers. Just to me, you're running, you're taking up two teachers for a class of 15 students.
And with all due respect, the perception would be then we favor French immersion over extended French.
But you have, but you have 35 students already on the waitlist and there was probably more than that before. Like the demand is there for French immersion.
But that's not, that, in my opinion, would not be equitable. So we scrap one program, we need to resolve the waitlist rather than scrapping another program.
Right. And I'm not, I'm not advocating for a phase-out of extended French. I'm not advocating for, you know, removal of this program at Our Lady of Peace. I do agree that if the board is going to keep two programs, there has to be a way to run them efficiently and run them in a way that meets the demand and that's for the board to figure out. So I'm not advocating, you know, to get rid of Our Lady of Peace.
That's a great segue. May I have a follow-up question?
That is the course of the day, so please do.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Protasen. There was a lot of discussion in the presentation, which is well-done, about many disparities between our board and other school boards, how they can offer more programs than we can. Could you answer the reason why on a general basis?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't know that I can certainly speculate or give any generalities around why that would be. Certainly, we are a Catholic board and so we do insist that our teachers be Catholic so that perhaps restricts our hiring pool. Currently, as we sit right now, as of today, we have three positions that are unfilled. The majority of our applicants are not interested in early French immersion. They are interested in junior, intermediate and senior French and we're very lucky to have them. And as I said at our last meeting, very proud of our French programming and hoping to maintain that excellence and certainly not objecting to expanding programming when that opportunity becomes available to us. But currently, as we sit today, September 17, still having three classes, not having a teacher in place, you know, I think that that's something that's a big consideration for us. What other boards may or may not do, it's different. The data is different. Some boards are running only one class. They have class caps. They have a certain, certain issues and different ways of organizing the programming. That is certainly just different. I'm certainly not saying better. Always ways that we can improve, certainly, but in a speculative way, I really can't look at what other boards are doing in a comprehensive way because as we continue to do the best that we can with the circumstances that we have so that we maintain the excellence of our programming, that is our main goal. So those are the realities of what we're facing and I thank you for the question.
Do we have any other questions from trustees? No? Thank you very much. We'll be, there will be a response to your delegation to be dealt with under the Agenda Item 8.1 coming up. Thank you. I now invite Mr. Kelly to present his delegation on policy II/51, optional French programming. You also have 10 minutes and I ask you to stage a script. At the end of the delegation, there will be an opportunity for trustees to ask clarifying questions. Would you like us to notify you when you have one minute left?
Sure.
Thank you.
So again, I'd like to speak on the EFI program and the, sort of, the advocacy for a, for a sibling policy, but what I want to talk to you about is sort of going to be more my experience, like on the ground and how it's impacted our family. Definitely not as sort of detailed and elegant as the, as the previous proposal, but sort of like a, like a, sort of like a real, here's been our experience and here's why I think it creates a hardship for families. Right now, we're, I've got two daughters in the system. One is in third grade at St. Mary's and in the EFI program. And our second daughter just started JK at St. Teresa. So what we're dealing with on a daily basis now, you've got basically two, two school start times that, you know, generally speaking, it's, it's sort of, the thesis is it's pulling our family apart at times when we should be together and we're having less quality time together. You've got two drop and two pickup times that are extraordinarily different. You've got, you know, they vary about close to an hour. And there is a bus, obviously there's always a busing solution, but I don't know if putting a four-year-old on a, on a 55-minute bus twice daily is a really good solution. You know, it's just, it's frustrating for us because when we look at, at the, at the public system and we, and we inquired, it was, it was yes. And there was, there was like a gap, there was like a five-second gap on the phone when I was speaking with the individual because I had to think, there's got to be a catch here. Like how easy, this is too easy. Because I'm sort of used to lotteries and hurdles and barriers and no, just, just no. So it's frustrating for us that, that the public board can be so accommodating and it's so easy. And, you know, you can't, we can't, we can't, I think as good parents, allow benefits to accrue to one of our daughters while depriving the other of those same benefits. And that's why we looked at, at an EFI program outside of the Catholic system. I think that's a moral, you can't give benefits to one child that the other child can't get. And that's more, and that's specifically speaking on, on the sibling policy. You know, I think that every time that, that there's been a meeting or anything that I've attended with respect to the EFI over the last three years, you can't help but get the sense or the vibe that this, this, it just seems to be a nuisance, right? It's a bit of a nuisance for the board instead of trying to find solutions where the demand is there and where you would think that, you know, you would try to find a solution. I just, I can't get the sense sometimes that it, this, this seems like a nuisance to the board. And, you know, our, our family going back generations, both mine and my wife's, we've got a proud Catholic tradition in, in the community, you know, in the parish, in, in education and training, in the Catholic, in the Catholic board. And it just, I would hope that if, and it's not a lot of kids, to try to find a sibling solution that can keep families together more, I mean, families is a pillar of the community, right? To keep, to keep you together more, to not have you divided, to not have your kids feel that one is maybe getting something that the other one isn't or there's, there's an inadequacy set up at a very young age. You know, I would just wrap it up, that it has placed, truly on a daily basis, it has placed a hardship on our family. And it has, it's frustrating again because it's kind of like, the only alternative is that you're being shown the door from the Catholic board. You're just being shown the door because the public board is so accommodating and we want to give our kids this benefit. And it's not a decision we want to make. It's not like a foolish retaliatory, you know, decision that we would make. It's not like a foolish retaliatory, you know, decision that we would make. But again, I would say it's unethical for us as parents to allow one of your children to accrue the benefits that another one can't. So I don't know how clear I've been with you. I'm just trying to, you know, trying to explain what we've been going through on a daily basis since school started. And I'm hoping that at least it might plant some seed to give you some thought about a sibling policy to help families. And I would wrap it up with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any questions, the trustees, for clarification purposes? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for coming and explaining your experience. Did you try and ask for your daughter who's in St. Teresa to go to St. Mary's?
Yeah, we did. But like, as previously stated, there was a 23-person waitlist. And we're speaking with the principal there. There was just-- there was-- no one was getting in. It was just nothing. No. And no solution beyond that. It's a full school. Right.
Any other questions, trustees? No? Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Response to your delegation will be dealt with under the Agenda Item 8.1. Moving on to approval of the minutes, September 3, 2019, regular board meeting. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder. We have trustee Duarte is the mover, seconder trustee Agnew. All in favor? Motion passes. Business-- the next item on the agenda is business arising from a previous meeting. A list of outstanding items is listed for your information. Is there any questions? No, thank you. Response to delegations. In accordance with our bylaws and Policy II-06, delegations to the board have four options. Trustees may move a motion to, number one, receive these delegations as information; number two, defer the matter to a future meeting; number three, request a staff report on this matter to be considered at a future meeting; number four, make a decision tonight on this matter. I will now open the floor to any trustee who wants to put a motion on the floor on how to proceed with tonight's first delegation. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for acknowledging me. I wanted to say that we have discussed this at our policy meeting, and going forward, we have a staff report coming to a future policy meeting describing the effects and ramifications of potential sibling acceptance into a school offering optional French programming. And what I'd like to move for the delegations tonight is that we can also include into that report the possibility of giving priority acceptance to cross-boundary applications to siblings of Early French-- of Extended French and French immersion. So since we already have a report, just to add a section that would deal with that.
Rosie, do you have-- is that clear?
Okay. So I'd move that we also include into that report the possibility of giving priority acceptance to cross-boundary applications to siblings of Extended French and French immersion.
Is that clear? Okay. Do we have a seconder for that motion? Seconder is trustee Intomasi. Open the floor for questions. Sorry, trustee Guzzo, I have a tick. I can't go to my right very often.
I'd like to amend that resolution to say that if we're going to give priority acceptance to cross-boundary, that as long as it does not interfere with our mainstream, our English students first. I would welcome that as an amendment to the motion.
Do we have a seconder for that amendment? Trustee Agnew? Open the floor for discussion. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. I would think that the staff would probably make that, like, in their report, they would say this and that, and they would bring that to their attention. So I don't know if it has to be as an amendment in there.
Trustee Guzzo, do we have a rebuttal?
I think I just-- we want to make sure that the program is-- obviously, if we can allow the cross-boundaries, we don't want to-- I'm sure the staff would not say no to it. However, we have to ensure that it is-- the English stream is the majority of the school, so we have to make sure that those cross-boundary requests are looked at first before we can even turn our-- have them turn their minds to it. So I just want to ensure that it's-- we don't want to give the false pretense that that would trump somebody-- something that comes up for the English stream.
Any further discussion? Trustee O'Brien?
Point of clarification. So are you asking then that students who are, like, in kindergarten would have that privilege? Who would that apply to? I'm just trying to understand that.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee O'Brien. Certainly, as in the case of Mr. Kelly and his family, two children who aren't in the program, but even if you have a child in grade four and then the child in grade one tries to get into the lottery but doesn't get in, but that they're allowed a priority for the acceptance into that school so to keep the family together.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions? No? Trustees Zarnata?
Trustee Carabella. So the report that we're going to ask for will include the sibling rule, what effect that will have. I just want to clarify what the report's going to have. The sibling rule, the effect it'll have, it'll include cross-boundary requests if the child doesn't get into the French immersion. And the third will-- the effect to the regular stream students for cross-boundary, right? Those three things? Okay. Thanks.
Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you. And I think that that was already part-- thank you, through you, Mr. Chair-- through the policy and what we had talked about with the staff report, that that would come back to allow us to take a broader perspective of it. So I think saying that and just putting, keeping it in line makes sense.
Are we ready to vote on the motion as amended? We'll call for a recorded vote. Trustee Zuzza? Suzanne?
Swan.
Swan, okay. I have bifocals, and I can't read that far. So I know Kim's name, but--
Yeah, in favor.
Thank you. I apologize. I don't work for the United Nations because I would start a war in my pronunciation of people's names. It would be awful. Trustee Intomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
So the motion as amended passes. Yes, sir.
You forgot to--
Oh, sorry. I was so excited that something actually passed, I forgot to ask you. I apologize. Fair enough. I was in favor anyway. Great, perfect. Thank you. You have to-- my attention spans out of a fly, so you have to-- and I'm old, so you have to give me some leeway. Now we are on to the second delegation. Sorry? Oh, the original motion, sorry. So we're now going to vote on the original motion as amended. No?
I wonder if the issue here, from listening to the delegations, is keeping the siblings together in the same school or if it's keeping the siblings together in the French program? That's what I'm struggling with here. Because I'm hearing one delegation say to have one child accepted into French and have the other one not is what's going to cause this friction as opposed to the physical building. So I'm just wondering if this is the best response to the need that's stated. I'm just wondering that.
Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I think that's why we asked in policy to get further information, so that we make sure we do make an informed decision on what is the best for the students' needs and if keeping the family unit together is feasible and growing the program as well. So as much as we can try to deal with it here, we know that it's here for its second reading. And our next policy meeting, we're going to have-- or not the next one, but the one after that, we're going to have a report on it. So it makes sense for us. It's hard for us to make a decision tonight. It was great that this information came because it comes, it's very timely, but I think we-- I think it's imperative for us to wait to see what the report says so that-- and we have more information now that we can add to it to make a decision on policy.
I thank you, trustee Guzzo. That's well-stated. I'd like to see this conversation continue in our policy meeting. I think this has been a real good spark to keep it going, so thank you.
Do we have any other discussion items, questions? No? So we're now ready to vote on the motion as amended. We voted on the amendment, which was passed. Now we're ready to vote on the deer in the headlight. Awesome. Okay, so let's-- yes, trustee Duarte?
Could you read the motion as amended, please?
Rosie? When in doubt, call Rosie.
That's-- okay. To also include in the staff report the possibility of giving priority acceptance to cross-boundary siblings to the Extended French and French program and that it does-- and as long-- I have as long as it does not interfere with the English stream.
Are we ready to vote?
I think we need to add a staff report at policy. Is that correct, at the policy committee meeting? Okay.
So we'll call for a recorded vote. Trustee Cartaro, since I missed you last time, let's start with you.
Caratow, in favor. All the same.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte. Trustee Zarnata. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Motion passes. And another name was slaughtered by the chair. I will now open the floor to any trustees who want to put a motion forward on how to proceed-- oh, sorry. Before that, in terms of the next step, Ms. Setimy will receive a formal written response from the Director of Education and Secretary of the Board confirming the decision of the board. I'll now open the floor to any trustee who wants to put a motion forward on how to proceed with tonight's second delegation. Would you like me to read the four options again? Trustees may move a motion to receive the delegation as information, defer the matter to a future meeting, request a staff report on this matter to be considered at a future meeting, make a decision tonight on this matter. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I think that the first motion that we just passed would apply to the delegation of Mr. Kelly as well, dealing with the same. He outlined similar requests for sibling acceptance or cross-boundary acceptance, so I think that the previous motion we just passed addresses that as well.
So you would like to move a motion that we receive this as information so I can check off my box?
Sure.
Perfect. Excellent. We have a seconder for that motion. Trustee Intomasi? Open it up for discussion. Any discussion? No? Are we prepared to vote? Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Caratow?
That's right. In favor.
So the next steps will be the same. We will-- you'll receive, Mr. Kelly, you'll receive written response from the Director of Education regarding the board's decision, confirming the board's decision. Thank you. Moving on to 8.2, Policy II-19, Occupational Health and Safety. Trustee Guzzo, please read the motion.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that Policy II-19, Occupational Health and Safety, be approved.
Do we have a seconder? Trustee Agnew? Let's call for a vote. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Motion passes. 8.3, Policy II-51, Optional French Programming, Immersion and Extended French. Trustee Guzzo, can you please read the motion?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that Policy II-51, Optional French Programming, Early French Immersion and Extended French, name be changed to Policy II-51, Optional French Programming, French Immersion and Extended French, and be approved at second reading.
May I have a seconder for this item? Trustee Duarte? No discussion. We'll move to a recorded vote. Trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Motion passes. 8.4, Policy II-52, Student Use of Service Animals in Schools. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that Policy II-52, Student Use of Service Animals in Schools, be approved at second and third reading.
They ask for a seconder. Trustee Intomasi? We'll call for a vote. Trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Motion carries. 8.5, Policy II-15, Workplace Violence. Trustee Guzzo, can you please read the motion?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of policy committee that Policy II-15, Workplace Violence, be approved as amended.
Do we have a seconder? Trustee Intomasi? Discussion? Let's call for a vote. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Motion passes. 8.6, Policy II-16, Workplace Discrimination and Harassment. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that Policy II-16, Workplace Harassment, name be changed to Policy II-16, Workplace Discrimination and Harassment, and be approved as amended.
Do we have a seconder? Trustee Duarte? Discussion? Let's call for a vote. Trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Motion carries. 8.7, Policy II-I-06 Harassment. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy II-I-06 Harassment be rescinded.
Do we have a seconder? Trustee Zarnata? Discussion? We'll call for a recorded vote. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Intamasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Uh, sorry, Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee Caratau?
In favor.
Again, attention span of a fly. You can't expect that much out of me. Motion passes. We'll move on to staff reports. 9.1, Clustered Classes and Accelerated Learning Opportunities. Superintendent Cipriano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair, present this staff report guarding clustered classes and accelerated learning opportunities. The purpose of this report is to provide for trustees the information that they requested through a motion of the Board that was passed on June 18, 2019. The motion requested senior staff to examine the feasibility of clustered classes and/or accelerated learning opportunities in secondary schools that currently have the Advanced Placement Program. What you have before you in the report is an outline and description of the AP and pre- AP classes that occur in our secondary schools. There's an outline of accelerated learning, what we would consider are some forms of accelerated learning in our secondary schools, including summer school, night school, and e-learning opportunities that are available to all students of the Board. We have in the report also a definition of clustered classes. I hope that we clarified for you the difference between clustered classes and gifted classes if we've outlined how some school boards will at times use these terms interchangeably despite each having very different legal requirements under the Act. The report also contains a review of the research around clustered and accelerated classes in secondary schools. The research is both from our internal surveys that we've conducted over the last couple of years of our gifted students themselves in secondary, as well as gifted parents over the past couple of years. Also, an overview of the literature on these subjects, as well as part of that literature review. You also have before you in the report an outline of the cost from planning services with respect to transportation should decisions be made to create clustered classes in our secondary school. Finally, you have our conclusions summarized in eight points at the end of the report. These conclusions are a reflection of the review of the work by all the departments and with a consultation from the many staff that had contributed to the report. And I'm pleased to share that this report was a collaboration of Special Education Services, Curriculum Services, Student Success, Research Development Services, Business Services and Planning, and of course, our Academic Services. Any of those listed on page 14 of the report here tonight would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Cipriano. Do we have any questions? Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. To Superintendent Cipriano, in the report you state clustered classes are not placements as defined by the Ministry of Education and cannot therefore be considered special education classes, correct? Correct. All right. However, I have a copy of the Simcoe County Board of Education Special Education Plan that they submitted called, and they have a placement called Secondary Gifted Congregated Cluster Program. That's what they used. And they submitted this plan. So that being the case, while this program does not, and they even say it right here in their plan, they say while this program does not meet the ministry's definition of a special education class, maintaining it as a placement option affords secondary gifted students the ability to be congregated and selected in secondary schools. So the fact that they submitted this in their plan and they called it a placement leads me to believe that it is really up to the Board to decide placements, though the ministry may have defined definitions. So a clustered class could be a Halton placement. Would that not be right?
No. According to the ministry, there are five placement options for special education, and two of them are special education classrooms. One is special education class with partial integration, and one is full-time. The other are regular classroom placements with different levels of support.
Trustee O'Brien?
I'll respond to that. I have a copy of that which you've recorded from the Special Education of Ontario document, and it does have those five placements there. But right underneath that, it says, "Other options exist to meet the students' needs and parents and school board staff are encouraged to explore them." So I think it's important to include that as one of, as an, I mean, that's right in the document. I can pass this around if you'd like to see it.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Again, cluster is a descriptor. For a class to be considered a special education class, it must, the students in that class to, for it to be considered a placement, must be placed in that class through an IPRC process. For a child to be placed in the class through an IPRC process, they must be identified as exceptional, meaning that all the students in that class would have to be exceptional. And if they are, again, it might be a descriptor, but it would be a special education class. They might call it clustered, I don't know, I can't speak to another Board and their descriptions of their classes, but a class, for a class to be considered a special education class, the students must be placed there through an IPRC.
May I respond to that?
Certainly.
Thank you. So is there not a difference between a definition by the ministry and a placement? Aren't those two different things?
I don't understand the question.
Well, I hear through the word placement, it seems that Simcoe has a placement, they call it Secondary Gifted Congregated Cluster Programming, and the ministry describes definition of a class, but a school board could have a placement that's not a class. A school board could have a placement that is not defined by the ministry. Could it not?
Not to my knowledge. We are bound by the five placements that the ministry has identified as special education class placements, as I've indicated several times. The first three placements are regular classroom with different levels of support. The fourth placement is a regular classroom, sorry, a special education classroom with partial integration, which means that students are in their own specialized class, as are our elementary gifted students, and they are partially integrated into other classes, or a full-time special education class with no integration, as are some of our secondary life skills classes. Those are the five placements.
Okay, and I will respond to that again, and I'll repeat myself again. It does say, again, I will read it, "Other options exist to meet the students' needs and parents, school board, staff are encouraged to explore them." And that's out of the same document, so...
I understand. Trustee O'Brien, you seem to be at a stalemate, so maybe this requires some further investigation at a different time, unless you have inclination to make a motion?
Um, no, I have a few more questions. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Our next question to Superintendent Cipriano, are the elementary gifted classes defined, the elementary gifted classes, are they defined as special education classes?
Yes, they are.
Now, in those classes, do all the teachers teach these, that teach these children, have special education qualifications?
To my knowledge, they do.
Every one?
To my knowledge, they do.
So French, planning time, they all have special education qualifications?
No, because they are placement option four, so it's partial integration. So during their times that they would consider them integrated, they are not required to be taught by special education classroom teachers. So a French teacher would not necessarily need to have their special education qualifications. That would be part of their partial integration, part of their day.
Okay. I would like to continue this last question. So if we did have a option four in a high school, there could be other teachers that these children could see that did not have special education qualifications?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Trustee O'Brien, why don't you ask your last question?
I will ask my second last question, thank you.
Oh, I thought it was your last question we agreed on, but please, please proceed.
Okay, now, it says in your report that self-contained classrooms rooms are neither necessary nor sufficient to meet the stiver's needs of our gifted learners, correct?
If that's what it says in the report, then...
It says page eight. Self-contained classrooms are neither necessary nor sufficient to meet the diverse needs of our gifted learners. If that is so, then why do we have self-contained classes in our elementary schools?
Again, the secondary experience is different than the elementary experience because students are within one, contained in one class and aren't required to take multiple courses, subject areas as they are in secondary. It's much more feasible, and most, if not all, school boards in the province have elementary contained, self-contained gifted classrooms. Very, very few school boards in the province have what we would consider true secondary gifted classes because of the sheer number of students that you would require to have a robust academic program to allow students a wide variety of courses. Again, because the gifted student population, it represents approximately 2% of the student population, in a board like ours that represents less than 300 students, if we were to get them all together from grade nine to 12, that would be less than 60 or 70 students per grade. That would not really allow them a full range of school, course options. So in elementary, it is feasible because you can bring them all together and they're taught all the subject areas, unlike in secondary where students do have options and versus their required courses.
My last question.
No.
So in a secondary school, it may not be feasible, well, it may not be feasible, but it's possible, and still every single teacher they may go to that's not their main teacher does not need special education qualifications, correct?
Correct. If it was a placement option four, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Cipriano. It's a very comprehensive report, and we thank your staff. We'll read through it, and I'm sure more questions will arise in the future. Moving on to, oh, Trustee Carabella? You have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to ask about, on page two of the report, you're saying that with respect to gifted students at these schools and enrollment in AP classes, very few gifted students register in the pre-AP and/or AP courses at Assumption and Bishop Reading schools. But Holy Trinity, I'm just wondering why Holy Trinity isn't mentioned, because they have the pre-AP.
I'll refer to Superintendent Finelli around the AP.
Thank you.
Questions?
We didn't include Holy Trinity because they're not in full implementation, so the data is not clean at this point until we get the program all the way through to grade 12. Where we can have a historical perspective, that's why we used Bishop Reading and Assumption because we have a historical data to collect.
Thank you.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Then in table one on page 10 of the report, I was wondering, it talks about the gifted students in the elementary panel, and those are the ones that are in the contained classes. But my understanding too was that there are gifted students that are identified as gifted but not, whose parents haven't chosen this path placement for them. And I'm wondering what the numbers would be if we included all gifted students identified in elementary panel.
I will refer to Fred Thibault for that question around the enrollment and transportation.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not quite sure it's going to answer the question entirely or satisfy the question, but what I can say is the rationale behind why we use the elementary self-contained gifted student cohorts is that, in my opinion, would be the best reflection of assuming who would actually enter into the program and continue on to their studies. And we also needed something that was representative of what the geographic distribution of students would be throughout the region within a similar grade structure, being four grades at the elementary panel, and we assumed they would all carry forward. And that helps us, or it assists us in assuming that we would have a generally comparable distribution of students, which then allows us to do routing and understand, you know, how many buses it would take. So this was more around assessing what the transportation's needs would be for this, making those assumptions as to what, you know, where the kids are right now. So that's why that was used.
Trustee Carabella?
I have a follow-up for the transportation then. So when you're looking at these numbers, are you giving them all a new bus just for them, or is it a regular bus that is just going to detour or arrive early for these students and then pick up the rest? Or are these numbers based on them having their own bus?
Through Mr. Chair, with regards to this, given the extensive geography that the students would need to travel, more than likely, a great deal of, well, it depends on what scenario you're looking at. The one scenario was looking more at one, well, transportation being offered for the three geographic areas that we would be offering AP. So you have Halton North, which is inclusive of Halton Hills, as well as the town of Milton, directed at Bishop Reading. Burlington would be directed at Assumption, which is the current AP school, and Holy Trinity for Oakville. With those, again, given the size of the routes and where we're going to be drawing students from, they would be much longer runs. Therefore, the opportunity for sharing is there, but is lessened because of the length of the runs. And again, we have some policy that defines as to how long a student should be on the bus for, especially in urban areas. Usually, we tend to try to stray away from anything over an hour, because that's typically not acceptable. Whereas, if you look at scenario two, we're looking at central location throughout the Board, that's where any kind of savings through sharing are pretty much removed entirely because of, again, if whatever central location you select geograph, in the geography of the Halton region, the distance that a student would need to travel is so great that that bus would be probably strictly dedicated to that one run, and there would be no other sharing opportunities. And again, we use the assumption that we would not be changing bell times for secondary schools for the benefit of this, so we have that limited flexibility as well.
Well, I'm not surprised, Trustee Carabella. It's always a pleasure to hear your questions. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. I just take the report seriously, and I do appreciate the amount of work that went into that and over the years gathering information and presenting it to us. So I wanted to ask, I was curious when I was reading this, about the history of gifted classes in the elementary panel. What year did that start, and how did that come about, if you don't mind if that...
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have that information at hand. If any of my colleagues would know that information.
Eight years, maybe? Eight years, nine years ago? Thank you.
Trustee Carabella, please.
I'll look into that. Then the other question, there was the one, I was really struck by the word you used, cannibalizing in here, and I didn't understand that, that whole concept that was being presented.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair, if I can try to explain. What our staff came to the conclusion was, the, essentially, the ask of the trustees was to look at clustered classes at sites where there already exists AP. As it was indicated in the report, a clustered class is a descriptor. AP really could be considered clustered classes. So to create a program, classes, at a site that already has a clustered class that we call AP, a different type of clustered, a different type of accelerated enrichment learning, would really be drawing from the same number of students that are already in AP. So what you would eventually, or essentially, be doing is taking from AP, and you would have two parallel programs running, probably not at full capacity. So you'd be cannibalizing, taking away, eating from the current program that's at the school. So if you, if there was an interest in creating further clustered classes, it would be recommended that it shouldn't be at schools where there is AP, to allow other school sites and other communities the opportunities for that enriched type of learning.
We have a question from Trustee O'Brien, then you, Trustee Carabella, afterwards. Please proceed.
Okay. So if we, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Cipriano, so if we don't look at the AP courses, and we picked a school that didn't have one, and you made a clustered class, could it not be called a special ed placement? Not class, a special ed placement?
Again, through you, Mr. Chair. I will say this again. For a class to be considered a placement, a special education placement, the students in that class, every single one of them, must be placed there through an IPRC, which means that they all need to be identified as exceptional students through, with an exceptionality, in this case, if it's for gifted students, with the exceptionality gifted for it to be considered a placement. which means that they all need to be identified as exceptional students through, with an exceptionality, in this case, if it's for gifted students, with the exceptionality gifted for it to be considered a placement.
Trustee Caramella?
Thank you for remembering, because I forgot my question and I remembered it. So isn't there like a waiting list for AP? Don't people apply and they have to get accepted and?
There is no waiting list, but there is definitely an application process to apply, which requires academic achievement, demonstration, and being able to be accepted based on how the student is performing in their elementary grade. So there is no waitlist, but they are screened and there are students that are not accepted in the AP program.
Since we have no further questions. Sorry, we have Trustee Caratow first and then Trustee O'Brien. Was there another hand up on this side? No? Oh, good.
Right. So I was just a little confused on page two of the 14-page report where it claims, "With respect to gifted students at these schools enrollment in AP classes, very few register in the pre-AP or AP courses at Assumption and BR. Typically, it's between zero and four." I was just a little confused at this statement because, I don't know, I think it's, the data is displayed in a awkward manner. I can attest from anecdotal evidence that in my gifted class, going from grade eight to grade nine, there was only one individual who did not choose to go into the AP program. So I think a range of zero to four is a little odd. I understand that it is an average over two years. But to draw the conclusion that very few gifted students register in AP, I feel that maybe it should be expressed as a percentage or perhaps a ratio to non-gifted students in AP. Maybe that would give us a better picture of gifted students in the AP program.
Superintendent Penelly?
Okay. We need to be very careful and I remind the trustees that everybody keeps referring to AP program. It's AP courses. So it's very difficult to quantify and that's why I had to give that range because it would be very easy to identify individuals. And yes, I had to look at the data over three years, the last three years, and I looked at specific AP courses. So perhaps in calculus, I'm going to use AP calculus, there may have been a handful. If you're talking about pre-AP, that's a different number. I'm talking about the ones that get to grade 11 and grade 12 and how many are actually gifted and actually have stayed in the program and have actually written the final college board AP exam for calculus. That's the data we look at. We look at how many are actually in. And I could not give specific because it would be too identifiable because the numbers are so small in the particular courses.
Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Cipriano. In your section on accelerated classes, you do say that students are also eligible to receive credit for prior learning, PLAR. How many PLAR credits does the board give out on average per year?
That is the part of the report that was written by Superintendent McGillicuddy. I think he can answer that question.
Please proceed Superintendent McGillicuddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the timeframe that the PLAR program has been in my portfolio of responsibilities, the number of students who have applied for PLAR in a given academic year are in low single digits. The success rate amongst those who do is very high, nearing 100% completion. But the numbers of them who apply to the program are low, annually.
Thank you. Trustee Caramella?
Well, I have no further questions. I was just thinking that because this is dealing with the gifted and the special education programming and that it could be forwarded to the SEAC committee for discussion, that they are also aware of this research that's gone on. Does anyone have any comments?
Trustee Agnew?
Just clarifications. So when you say brought, like what are you looking at specifically?
I guess that it would be brought to SEAC that they're aware of it. Could be a discussion item or information item, whatever, that the people from the other communities are aware of what was done for the special education question.
Trustees Zarnata?
I'd like to put a little twist on this whole conversation. We've been talking about clustered classes, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to offer up for everyone's information, I would like to suggest more AP or AP courses in the north. We don't have any AP courses in the north. So instead of adding more clustered classes, how about adding AP courses to Halton Hills? It's in that report as a suggestion. I'd just like to validate that suggestion.
Trustee, Superintendent Penelly?
Again, it's the will of the board. We will follow whatever. But the reality is, we also have to put the budget behind it. It's very simple to say, let's add another AP program in the north, which we will work with the staff and the school community. But introducing AP courses in another high school will require implementation money upfront, which we included in the previous board, how much it costs to start an AP program, as well as ongoing support. All three of these high schools get ongoing support in our budget and Superintendent Lofts and others, it comes to the board, it is on the budget line, IB, AP. And we continue to support because you need ongoing teacher training, you need resources, you need all of those things to sustain the program. So if that's the will of the board, then we need to know that, we need to budget for it. And it isn't just a one time. It is an ongoing cost that will be part of our budget and we will have to find the resources for it.
Thank you. Trustee Antamasie, then Trustee Agnew?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Have we established perhaps what the demand is up north?
Would one of the superintendents like to comment or?
We've never gone there because we've been, our resources have been put towards areas that we have had requests and the numbers have been there. But we also have to budget that, we have to look at that, if that's the will. But I'm not sure because it's not just a one time. It's not, like I said, a one year. It has to be long-term. Will it be able to sustain? We're not going to invest $150,000 the first year and get a group of students up and running and then it won't sustain long-term.
Trustee Agnew, sorry, Trustee Antamasie, we have Trustee Agnew, and then would you like to rebuttal after that?
But I just wanted to clarify the question.
Please.
To get deeper. So my question was, have we established what the demand is up north? Number one. And number two, the cost to start it up would be prorated over the demand or, you know, whatever comes back.
Trustee, sorry, Superintendent Penelly?
No, the cost isn't coming back. It's part of what we offer our students. And many of these programs, we are hoping we will attract not only our own students and provide the program for our own Halton Catholic District School Board students, but we also attract students from the public and elsewhere, private. But we have no way of knowing that.
Trustee Agnew?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So Trustee Antamasie kind of added a question there to his, but my piece was around the cost. So I understand it was presented prior to us. But I'd be interested in what that implementation costs look like, if anybody has an idea.
Ballpark, we presented in the June with the previous board. And we, in that, it was still the gifted programs, the IB and the AP. And a startup cost for an IB program, it was in that report, based on a startup, two years ahead of even getting the program in an IB, is about $250,000 on startup the first couple of years in terms of getting your teacher training. All of that AP is much cheaper, but you still need probably in a roundabout way, about $60,000, $75,000. I think that's what the report. But then you have to also look at the costs of implementation in terms of, as I said, ongoing, what you start off with training in AP in your first year of staff. You've got to be able to sustain it and continue to bring in and train teachers ongoing.
Oh, you have, right there.
Superintendent Cipriano?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I've got the report in front of me from the spring, or sorry, from last year. Startup budget for AP is, it was budgeted for $30,500, ongoing AP costs of $179,000. I'm assuming that's per year.
Per year.
And again, the recommendation from the staff obviously did not, recognizing that it's at the will of the board to decide where, if you decide to recommend to put an AP class up, sorry, classes up in Georgetown, we were looking at it from a perspective of equity, recognizing that Georgetown does not have an AP or an IB school site. And that we recognize that to support gifted learners and high achieving learners up in Georgetown in North Halton, it was an issue of equity from our perspective.
Superintendent, sorry, I keep moving everybody's title around. Secretary Daly?
Just to answer Trustee Antamasie's original question, I don't think we've done a specific study as to looking at, I don't want to say the need, but the interest in AP in the north, no.
Trustee Zarnata?
To Chair, as this is germane to the conversation, I would like to introduce a motion to request some sort of a feasibility, not that you don't have more to do, but a feasibility study of exploring the IB and AP in North Halton Hills. Be it resolved.
Do we have a second? Trustee Agnew? Second, discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah, I can add something on that. I would reconsider the IB because there is already an IB program in Georgetown. It's with the public board. So the chances of ourselves getting an IB program, again, it's not up to just ourselves. It would be in conjunction, we're talking with the IB World School and they may not be in support of it. So I want to be very clear. That decision isn't just resting with staff, it's beyond us. AP is different. It's a different process. The IB is a very complicated, as our director knows, having gone through STA in the past. And it's not up to us to make that decision. Given the feasibility in the north, we will get a better indication from IB to tell us if it's worth us exploring that.
Duly noted, and I will defer to Superintendent Penelly, who has more experience in this as I. I would amend the motion to say a feasibility study of AP courses in North Halton Hills.
Do we have a second for the amendment? Trustee Agnew, discussion item? No? Trustee O'Brien?
I want to thank you, Trustee, for bringing this forward. I believe often that the north is neglected in this area and I often wonder why the locations are all south. And this spirit of equity, I think it's an excellent motion and I will support that motion.
Further discussions? Secretary Daly?
I'd just like to note that we don't make programming decisions based on neglecting one geographic area or another.
Thank you. Any other discussion items? So we will vote on the amended motion, recorded vote. Trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Caramella?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasie?
Favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Motion amended, amendment passes. We'll now vote on the motion as amended. Trustee?
Favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasie? Trustee Caramella?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata? Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Just want to confirm then that this could, the consensus is that it can go to the SEAC committee, this report?
Are you making a motion to send this SEAC committee as an information item or?
Okay, sure. I'll make a decision.
Or is it just by consensus? Trustee Agnew?
I mean, yeah, we can do that. I mean, I would think it could also go through Superintendent Cipriano's report at SEAC as well, if that's an easier, I'm just trying to figure out the best way to bring that information forward.
Superintendent Cipriano, is that possible?
Absolutely. At a typical SEAC meeting, I do have a superintendent report where I discuss any items of relevance to special education. I would be bringing the recently passed policy around service animals in schools because it has significant special education implications. I'd be bringing this report as part of my superintendent report, the information around it. I could also, again, if it seems like it's consensus, I can attach the report as well and speak to it. And I'm sure it would probably create some discussion as well.
So do we have consensus that we would like Superintendent Cipriano to do that? Perfect. We appreciate that. Does that satisfy you, Trustee Caramella?
Thank you very much.
Trustee O'Brien, I'm going to ignore that you had your hand up a little while ago unless it's very poignant and germane. This is a zombie staff report. It keeps coming back to life.
It's one that's just, a zombie is the best to do, come back from the dead though, right? So I don't need to seeter further. If it's going to SEAC, that's what I want.
Perfect. Thank you. We will move on because there are absolutely no other questions. We're moving on to item 10.1, student trustee update. Trustee Caratow?
Yes. Besides what Trustee Bambara mentioned at our last meeting, we will be attending the Oxta Regional Meeting on the 24th September in Aurora, Ontario, as well as the Oxta ECO Fall General Meeting, 17th to 20th October, as mentioned before. As for any news that's come up since then, we did have our first meeting as a student senate. It was in Corpus Christi Catholic Secondary School in Burlington. Student senators decided their lead senators for each school, those who essentially lead their delegation, take responsibility for their own school by recording minutes and talking to their school's administration. We discussed principally what we discussed here at the board meeting. We related back to our student senate. We also updated them on our schedule, as I've just told you. And we have begun to plan out our bullying prevention campaign launch, including see the problem, be the solution, and the initiatives that student senate is going to make. All the senators have begun to formulate their plans and the majority of them have already, I've confirmed, discussed with their administration. Some of them I've not yet confirmed, but they are meant to, you know, discuss the initiative with their admin. Apart from that, I don't believe there is anything else to report from the student trustees.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? No? Thank you, Trustee Caratow. There are no school educational field trips. We're moving on to 10.3, strategic plan 2016, 2021. Directors' report to trustees, year three of the implementation. Director Daly?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of the strategic plan report is to update trustees on our year three implementation of our multi-year strategic plan. Our current plan was launched in September of 2016 and trustees would be aware that we'll begin the process of planning our next multi-year strategic plan later on in the spring. There's really two elements to this particular report. So one is a survey that was conducted last June where we asked for feedback from stakeholders on the various pillars of the plan. The second part is attached. It's an update on progress that we've made on the various pillars and that continues throughout the system, both from last year and will continue into this year. In terms of the stakeholder survey report, trustees would have seen that the stakeholder responses indicate a fairly widespread satisfaction with our work around student and staff faith formation, teacher-student collaboration in the classroom. We've done quite a bit of work this year around kind of shoring up our foundational elements. There are some areas that of note that we still need to draw some attention to. So while we do, we do stress holding high expectations for all of our students and meeting the needs of our learners. That's something that was reported back by our stakeholders, both staff and parent stakeholders at a bit of a lower level. Also, our work with our community partners, which is interesting because we do work with community partners throughout the board. So that may talk a little bit, maybe more about how specific we are around how we communicate that. And another one of note, from the staff perspective, staff reported lots of opportunities for PD, lots of tremendous opportunities for faith formation, but less so on evidence-based decision-making in PD. And that's really, that's all we do when we offer PD to our staff. We really are trying to stress that programs and pedagogy that we're putting in place in the classroom is based on research as opposed to just kind of the flavor of the month. So that's certainly something that we'll try to address as we go forward. Certainly, again, on a go-forward over the course of this year, we've already seen a few presentations so far this year, one this evening from Pathway. Superintendent Penelly updated us on the IB report a couple of meetings ago. So we'll bring to board as well our EQAO results, our Math Action Plan, our mental health strategy, our plans for FSL programming in the future, the ongoing kind of facilities and construction reports we do to try and keep trustees up to date over the course of the year with regards to where we are with our strategic plan. of the year with regards to where we are with our strategic plan. The second part of the plan, it's a lot of information spanning across those four pillars. It's a bit of a laundry list of, of kind of things that we've achieved over the last year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have either on report number one or report number two. And Dr. Keating can help me out if we, if we need some help from research as well.
Thank you, Director Daly. Do we have any questions? Trustee Carabella? You don't have to look so sheepish when you, when you raise your hand.
Okay. So on, I was wondering on, is it page 105 of the board package? Maybe it's not anymore. But anyways, it's about the IT purchases. And I'm wondering, is that brought to us at the budget where, where those purchases are made? It's some, a lot of learning devices. Oh, here it is. It is page 105. Purchased more than 800 new devices through curriculum services, including 667 iPads. Is that brought to us at, when we're doing the, the budget at the end or along the way? Do these things come?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Those items are purchased as part of the budget that's allocated to, to the, to the budget, to the IT department. So as part of that budget, you'll see those expenditures for the number of items that Bill summarized on. The senior manager of IT summarized for us.
Follow-up. What is the Bright Space? Bright Space portfolio?
I might.
Is it in here? It's called Bright Space? Anybody know what that is?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It is a learning platform that the ministry has invested in for the next 10 years, and we certainly are working and encouraging our staff to be using it as much as possible and doing a lot of training sessions with it and buying the devices to facilitate that learning.
Good clarification. How do we, through you, Mr. Chair, how do we establish how much money is going to new technical devices?
We've had a tendency to focus on our infrastructure. Number one is what we've been focusing our attention on over the last number of years to bring up our infrastructure. As far as a percentage, it's, the budget is built upon if there's a need. I know in code, there's actually a steering committee that's put together that helps to look at the needs of the boards, and that steering committee, which are senior IT. So prior, it was Wayne. Now it's Bill as part of to help determine what the needs are in the system and then reallocate budget accordingly within that. So as far as percentage, Trustee Entomasi, it's more of a need that's brought forward as part of the steering committee.
So you're saying you don't have a budget every year that goes towards IT? And if there's more need, do we add a percentage to that need?
There is a budget that goes to IT, and if there's more need, we look at bringing other budgets within the IT department and to allocate towards that need.
So who establishes what monies are going to be spent where? Is there a process in place that deals with that?
There is a process in, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. There is a process that's in place as far as the actual dollar percentage that goes into. I, I, I'm not sure if I understand the question.
I'm just trying to get a feel on who activates the need. Is it based on people giving you, saying, this is what my need is, and then you put it into, you know, a list of things to do, and then you decide who's going to be getting one? Is it partitioned? How do you do it?
Well, it's not, I'm currently not a member of the steering committee, so I don't have access to that identical information as how it's done. But I do know that steering committee is part of where the needs are in the system. So I wish I had further information. I can get back to you on that information if needed, but I just don't have it with me right now.
Trustee Duarte?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Question to, to Director Daly. What about the home-school parish partnership? Are we tracking it in the strategic plan? How well are we doing there?
So some of the initiatives are listed in, in the strat plan. I think if you go back to the stakeholder feedback, I think there is actually a specific reference to the parish-home partnership, and it's relatively high in terms of how people felt that part. Eighty percent? Seventy-six percent? Okay. Can you, can you, do you have that question there, Dr. Keating?
Sorry. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. On page 10 of the report, we do ask the stakeholders how they feel, how well they feel schools and parishes work together to strengthen home-school parish relationships. And seventy-six, seventy-six percent agreed or strongly agreed that we're doing a good job with that, and only 10% felt that we weren't.
Any further questions? Trustee Carabella?
On page 109, and it's under the believing, so the fourth bullet, we received accreditation to offer AQ courses in religious education in Catholic schools during the 2018-19 school year, and we offered Parts One and Two. So I just want to understand, that is teachers, teaching, teachers. Yeah, could you answer?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. So the AQ courses, they're actually called additional qualification courses, so they're for teaching staff. And so you have to get accredited through the Ontario College of Teachers if you want to be one of the providers. So in that report, it's outlining that we were accredited for Parts One and Two, and then we've actually since then been accredited for Part Three. So those are the three parts that you can get your specialist. And it is, a lot of times, teachers teaching teachers. So we have a hiring process for the teachers that will run that program, and we go through that. So generally, it ends up being teachers, but sometimes we've used diocesan staff as well who aren't necessarily teachers, but they're experts in whatever particular strain they're looking at for, for different parts. So it's, it's not just one teacher teaching Part One. It would be numerous people teaching Part One that come in with various expertise around scripture or theology or spiritual development and that. So it just depends on, on what portion they're in.
How many of those teachers would there be teaching? Like, how many is involved in that? Is it 10, 20? Just an idea.
We don't have the current data on it, but I would think for each part, there's maybe three, three to four teachers over. And it just depends, right? And they'll overlap a bit, so you might have three to four teachers, but they're teaching parts of Part One and parts of Part Two as well. So I don't think we'd have more than seven or eight people involved in the three parts. Through you, Mr. Chair. The people who are teaching, they are teachers, but they also all have their Masters of Religious Education or Theology. That is one of the requirements that we have when we do seek our teachers out. And we often have at least one or two instructors from the diocese that are involved in, in the work.
Just to follow up, are there, is this what you need to take to become a principal? Or is it just open to any teacher who would like to take that to further their education?
So our hiring requirement is when someone is hired, they have, I think it's two years that they have to take Part One. So all of our teachers would have Part One and Religious AQ. Beyond that, it's optional. It's open to all teachers, but it becomes a requirement if you're going to positions of added responsibility such as principals. So you would work your way up to having your religion specialist.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much. 10.4, 2018, 2019, Parent Satisfaction Survey Results. Director Daly?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the Parents Satisfaction Results, it used to be called the Parent Retention Survey. So there was a board motion a couple of years ago that we brought back a report on parent retention. And essentially, it asked the question, basically, have you thought at any point in the last six months of transferring your child out of the board? So while that, while that information is included in this report, it, in some ways, didn't tell us a whole lot more. So we did make a couple of adjustments to the survey this year, really to kind of maybe make it more useful for, for our purposes. So not to generalize too much, but essentially about 10% of our parents that responded at some point over the last school year contemplated moving their child to another board for a variety of reasons. That kind of matches up with our elementary to secondary retention rate, so the number of students in our elementary schools that end up in our high schools is around 93%. And our cohort retention, so students that start in grade nine, at least our last one, our last graduating group of students, students that started with us and students that finished with us, is around 90% as well. So that 10% factor seems to be relatively, or 7% to 10% factor seems to be relatively consistent. So the, the percentage of people that thought of leaving this year was markedly lower than it was last year, but because it's kind of a bit of a snapshot in time, it really might speak to specific things that were going on at the board or from year to year. Certainly, the considerations people have around why they might want to leave have, some of them are fairly consistent, and they're outlined in the report for the parents that did consider leaving. And there was kind of an other category. The top three or four outlined in that category are fairly, have been fairly consistent over time.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Superintendent Daly, the response rate was incredible. Over 3,000 parents, right?
Through, through, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it was a good response rate, but it was quite a bit down from the previous year, actually. The previous year, I think the response rate was 6,000. But again, I would, I would, I would offer without a PhD behind my name that sometimes the response rate, it, it's a little bit of what issues may be going on in the board at, at a time that might pique parent interest in terms of why they may respond to a survey like that.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It said 50% of the respondents leaving the board says it was because of disaffection with program or service. Do you know, can you elaborate on that or all?
On that, if she could.
Thank you, Director Daly. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so we did find that that was the biggest reason for people wanting to, or considering leaving the board. And I just wanted to point out that it's, we did have 9.2% saying they were considering leaving. 1.6% of those were moving, so they may not have been dissatisfied with anything, just to moving. So those who indicated they were dissatisfied was actually 7.6%. Programming, the biggest issue was French, would, would have been the one that was most commonly cited. And then other than that, it would have been, it was quite variable. We did include all of the comments in the report, so, so they have been stated by people, but French programming was the number one concern.
Do we have any other questions? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just to comment, Director Daly, about the retention. Would that be 93% overall? Because I think some schools have, they don't retain that many each year going into high school.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. The vast majority of our elementary schools would be the 80 to 90, and we've got quite a few that have 100%. We do have a couple of our elementary schools that are really outliers, low, and historically, so.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? No? We will move on to 10.5, International Society for Technology and Education Conference. Superintendent Kroll?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I will be brief. I'll provide a quick summary of the conference that I attended in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania in June 2019. It's a good news story in that it was work that had been done over the past couple of years here in our school board around professional development for our school administrators. We used a peer-led model, supported by curriculum, supported by IT, where administrators were developed, delivering professional development for their fellow administrators at some of our family schools meetings. And using the wonderful research department, we noted that this was highly successful, that it was a model that was working and that we received really positive feedback for. And the suggestion from research was that this would be an opportunity to share this at a conference, that it'd be worth presenting. So in working with, with research and Laura's wonderful department, we put a proposal through to the ISTI organization. That proposal was accepted, and with the help also of Strategic Communications, they helped me create the presentation and information, presentation to bring. So the purpose of attending the conference was, one, to share that PD model, and it was well-received, but then also to participate in the conference. And I outlined for you the wonderful learning opportunities that, that were there at the conference. I felt that it was, in terms of the two reasons for attending, it was worthwhile. To be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? No? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. 10.6, Student-Centered Coaching Workshop. Superintendent Porcassen?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this report outlines the learnings of Vanessa Schwed, one of our curriculum itinerants, and Jill Staples, our curriculum coordinator, who attended a workshop on student-centered coaching in Denver, Colorado. And the purpose of the report is to share their key learning and observations from the two-day workshop. And I welcome any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? No questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to 10.7, Construction Reports. St. Nicholas Catholic Elementary School. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we have the construction report for St. Nicholas School Construction Project for September. The majority of the roof is on now. We're working on the insulation and brick veneer on the facade of the school. Next month, we'll move into starting the interior finishes, site grading, which is the asphalt and concrete, and still targeting a opening after Christmas. Any questions from trustees? They'd be happy to entertain at this time.
Any questions? No? Thank you very much. We'll move on to 10.8, Construction Report. Bishop Redding, Catholic Secondary School. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we have the Bishop Redding School Edition Construction Project Report for September. So as you can see, we completed the majority of the site works around the exterior of the school over the summer. We have a lot of new site services that were installed to accommodate the new addition. It was a lot of work over the summer. We have new boilers that are installed in the existing portion of the school. And as well, now we have foundations that are in for the classroom section specifically, which is the, it's a 28 classroom addition on this piece, which is where the majority of the new classrooms are going to be housed on the northwest corner of the school. So those are up to grade now. And moving in the next month, starting the footings for the cafeteria addition, which is on the northeast side of the school, and as well as continuing with the masonry for the classroom addition piece, and then underground plumbing for the classroom addition as well. Happy to take any questions from trustees at this time.
Any questions? Trustee Duarte?
A simple question to, through you, Mr. Chair. Are you happy with the pace of work and the, the traffic are moving around? It seems to be a bit of a mess. Are you happy with the pace of construction and is everything on schedule?
Through the chair. It is moving very well at that site. There was an incredible amount of work to maneuver around for the summer. We just passed through. Considering we have to upgrade the services on all four sides of the school while keeping the school open all summer for the childcare center that's there, and then Maneuver 51 Portables are on the site as well. It was a lot of, I mean, it's, it's a large site, but there's a lot of work going on there at the same time. A lot of coordination went on. So, and even through the addition portion that we have going on right now, as you've seen from the plans, we're adding on at three corners of the building right now. So it's not like it's all contained in one, one nice area. We are, you know, it is behind, you know, fences and keeping it segregated as best we can, but yeah, there, there will be some challenges navigating the site for the next year while we do the addition. But we do have it, you know, many different access points throughout the site. And, you know, outside of the, kind of the, the big rush times in the morning and the afternoon, it is functioning very well. So we're keeping people safe on site and getting the work done as fast as we can.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? No? We'll move on to 10.9, Construction Report. Assumption Catholic Secondary School. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we have the construction report for the Assumption School addition for September. As you can see from some of the pictures there, we have new lockers, new lighting in the hallways, new field, new astroturf field in the back. You can't see it as well, but above the ceilings, we have new mechanical units in all the existing portions of the school. Moving forward, we're just finishing up the underground plumbing in the new addition sections, mostly in the cafeteria area in the new addition. We have finishing the outdoor plaza that's behind the school, so a larger chaining wall going in there, and then we're into compacting the soils there and preparing the finished grade at the back of the school, which will be a large outdoor plaza for the students.
of the school, which will be a large outdoor plaza for the students. The new student atrium, which is the old library, is set to open at the end of this week, so that should be, will be exciting for students and staff at the school. Yesterday and today, we had the new pre-cast slabs dropped in for the second floor of the new addition portion at the front of the school, so we'd been waiting for that for a little bit, so now we have the second floor slabs in for the second level, and we're moving on. Tomorrow, we start the masonry for the second floor walls on the addition, and keep that area moving as well, so lots going on at the site, we had a PEA day yesterday, so there's a lot of people on site, many trades, we have over 50 trades on site, or tradesmen on site, working on the, on various facets of the building, so trying to keep things moving along there, and still targeting a opening for, of all the new areas by second semester of this year. Happy to take any questions that trustees may have on the assumption project.
Trustee Brian?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, I'm getting some questions from Ray Pairs about the cafeteria, so is there a end date in mind for that?
For the new cafeteria addition? Yeah, so we're, I mean, that'll definitely be our focus, knowing that right now, the temporary cafeteria is set up in the, in the single gym, so as we get the, the new addition in close, our focus will be on getting that area opened up first. Again, it's too early to tell on the exact date when we hope to have it open, but that'll be our first area that we focus on, and knowing that we expect to have all of that done by semester two, it'd be sometime throughout, throughout semester one.
So, thank you. Ballpark, maybe January?
I'd say, yeah, December, January would be our, our guess, so.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Being that safety is the main concern of the Hilton Catholic District School Board, and to acknowledge that efficiencies do not overshadow student success, and that HSTS is providing a service to the Hilton Catholic District School Board, be it moved to that a review and report of busing routes and protocol, of how the routes are decided, and to advise of the efficiencies created by said routes, using the neighborhood of Clearview as a point of reference, be provided to the Board of Trustees. She will have it.
Thank you, we will add that notice of motion to the action item October 1st board meeting. Item 11, miscellaneous information, minutes for the June 11th, 2019 Policy Committee Meeting are provided for your information. Item 12, there is no correspondence. Item 13, open questions, do we have any questions? Okay, we have, we have some questions here. Question one, how many students in a given year select grade 12 AP courses without having completed pre-AP courses?
I cannot answer that question, Superintendent Patelley?
From the data that I've seen, none.
Thank you, question two, how many students actually earn more than eight, A, either eight, and B, nine ministry-funded questions in a, credits, sorry, in a year, I'm getting a bit punchy.
I'm not sure if anybody here would be available to answer that specific question tonight.
Okay, thank you. Question three, how many students actually earn credits through the PLAR process in any given year?
I think that question was asked and answered during the, during the session.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, question four, in calculating transportation costs to clustered AP classes, did the board assume new buses to transport gifted students only, or using existing buses to fit, to first pick up students outside of the boundary first, and then continue on their regular route?
I believe that was trustee Carabella's question, and it was answered.
Thank you, that is all of the questions. In camera, we do have to move back in camera, Secretary Daley, should we excuse the staff at this point?
Not, not quite yet.
Okay, you need a few minutes? So at this point, we'll have to clear the gallery, and we'll need a motion to move back into camera, that is moved by trustee Zarnata and seconded by trustee Agnew. All in favor? Let's move back in camera. All in favor, can we, let's go energy folks, let's go, maybe we should do some push-ups, get the blood flowing, the motion passes. Thank you. To move back in camera.
Actually-